Okay, we're gonna call a meeting to order. It is Wednesday, November 20th, 2019. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, born and unborn.
Okay, minutes and reports received and filed.
The sheriff's, October 2019, please tell.
Okay, Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Then Missouri Solid Waste Management District Advisory Board Meeting this afternoon. We're gonna do some grant approvals, recommendations. And we got a meeting tomorrow, Chamber Connections tomorrow afternoon. Friday morning, we got a quick meeting. That's about it. It's deer season, that's what it should be.
So, yesterday, we had a Harlan Port Authority meeting and went over some of our, some of the companies that were contacting to try to gauge interest and get the surveys. So, one of the things that came out of that was it seemed like they were wanting to make assumptions with limited data. And so, I told them that I wanted hard data and I wanted to know who it was coming from. And otherwise, the survey was worthless and we just wasted a bunch of money and the port was dead. So, anyway, I said, this, all this ties into having a port director with good knowledge to move forward and who he needs to contact. And so, it seemed like everybody was on board. But, anyway, and then Rudy was there and he was ready to prefile the legislation on the land conveyance. And if he saw the paper this morning, we supported that. And we had another working group for the port this morning. And we're trying to go through a list of 3,000 names and try to narrow it down to a smaller group, smaller sampling, but try to get the right people there. So, if you have any names that, of people that we definitely need to contact, let us know. They should all be on the list, but there's no guarantees. There's a progress meeting on the site improvements this afternoon. Going to Russellville City Council Meeting tomorrow evening at 6:00 to talk about some permits and stuff and how they do the permit process. I don't know if you guys were on that email yesterday with the city of Centertown?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
I mean, that's a good point, so they can keep things moving, don't have to wait until the next meeting.
Right.
But it's gonna be up to the city council to decide if they wanna do that.
Right.
We're just saying, hey, we'll do our part years after that.
So, the main thing was, is just talking with Public Works, is that they don't know what's allowed and what's not allowed within those cities and what's their regulations. Obviously, if it's a deck or, you know, if it's a building, is it on the right of way? Is it not on the right of way? But hopefully, they can figure that out because that was a concern of Russellville's is, look, we can't wait 30 or 45 days for our next meeting and then have to take all this up because that's just delaying that stuff. And then, see something on my calendar about RPC and MoDOT Regional Transportation Needs List. On Friday at 2:00, Cole County Public Works Conference Room. Did you guys see that? So, the RPC and MoDOT are on our transportational needs list. So, that's Friday at 2:00. A lot of times, that's just kinda going over the list there. I think that's all I got.
I've got a USS Missouri Commissioning Committee Meeting tomorrow at 8:00. And we've got our interviews at noon. Saturday, Friday, early. Saturday, I'm doing a Kwas program with Hal. Monday, I get to be a judge at the Realtors. And you're not up for any award, Jeff, I'm sorry.
Is this a coloring contest? Could've told you it wouldn't be.
And then, Melissa and I have a
I hate to cry.
Census meeting with the city at 2:00 on Monday also. So, that's all I've got. Okay. Commission comments, bids and contracts, inmate medical bill award.
If you look at, we got, we tried to go with the 12-hour verse to help us on other aspects, but that was just way too expensive, we couldn't afford it. So, we went back out with a addendum, went for eight hours like we have right now. The annual price that you can see there, only two of them actually bid on the eight-hour. One was a lot cheaper. However, we are wanting to go with advanced correctional. They are more expensive, but we've been with them for a long time. The other group hasn't really made it into this area, they're mostly west coast. So, we'd rather not be the experiment. So, we wanna stay with advanced correctional. The budget that we have with Kristen right now did not have that much money in there. I think we're short like $7,000, but we're looking for the money in the budget with Kristen to make sure we can make that number work.
So, is this for next year then, or?
Yes. Is it, it's not December, is it?
And so, we're talking about the eight slash seven
Yes.
nursing hours, so that's eight hours a day, seven days a week?
Yes, sir.
And did they do, are they doing some of the extra stuff that were, that's another outfit?
They cut, so they cover that, that extra expense, so I don't have to have anybody there 24/7. We're still gonna have to have someone there for the other 16 hours.
No, I was referring to the disabled inmate
Yes.
that we had. So, we have somebody else covering that, covering that individual. Is this just a one-year deal, or did we get a three-year option? And did we know what the renewables were, I mean, for years two and years three, or?
Was it 3%?
Maximum 3% or fixed 3%? Yeah, that's good.
It's part of doing business, yeah.
Exactly right, sir.
Yeah.
I don't know, I think there's a big price difference there, so.
Yeah.
I don't know about that one.
Well, we followed up on checking with the different vendors and the people that they use as recommendations. And like I said, we're just, they're more of a, JK is more of a staffing entity, they're not really a medical company too. So, I think that's something else they're trying to break into. And they may do good later on. I just, like I said, there's just not enough out there to know and this is a huge liability to the county.
So, they would just hire nurses and?
I, I don't know, it's just that, you know, if you look at their, if you look at their website, it, they call it themselves, I can't remember the exact name, something like a staffing, a staffing medical company or something like that. It's, they don't have the, I don't know if they have the procedures and stuff. You know, and I'm hesitant to be that guy, to be the first one in the state of Missouri. And, because the only way you get tested on this is if someone dies in your custody or if you get sued.
We didn't talk about this, did we? I know you, you talked to us about the owner requiring extra care, but?
No, no, we talked about this too. I told you guys, we talked about the, we were trying to go to 12 hours or even 24 hours.
No, I meant about the actual bid.
Uh, no, I don't think we did talk about it.
Okay, 'cause a lot of times you'll get ahold of us or, I don't get ahold of me anyway, I guess it's 'cause I'm difficult or something. But you usually let me know kinda what to, deals, can we, I mean, does it have to be done today? Can we kinda look into this JK a little more?
We've checked into them pretty good. I, like I said, I am not comfortable with going with them. If you, if you're wanting to, to use them, we can, but I don't know if that's a, I don't think it's
You have two yeses here.
I don't really wanna take a chance, because if we've, if we've used advanced correctional and they have been doing a good job, I'd just soon stay with what we've had and, you know, nothing ever gets cheaper. But I, I, yeah, I'm, I don't really wanna deal with a company out of state that
And, and advanced correctional is used by quite a few different jails inside of, when I say quite a few, I would say probably 20, 21, 22, inside the state of Missouri alone, so. They're nationwide, but inside the state of Missouri, they're used quite a bit, so.
So, are they providing supplies and stuff too, or are they just providing the staff?
They, I think they provide the supplies for themselves. This is all we have to pay for them. Now, we do provide them a, you know, our medical wing down there, we provide an office and I'm sure if they needed office supplies, we'd probably provide that, but you're not talking about that much.
I mean, is it, I don't wanna get us into a liability situation, but is this something that we could look at? I mean, for $190,000, could we look at hiring our own nurses? Why?
Because of liability. Then we're taking on all the liability of everything. Right now, if something happens, it's advanced correctional, it's taking on all the liability when it comes to the inmate's health. If we do that, then it's, it's like self-insuring ourselves.
We had a lawsuit and our exposure was minimal, but, and they sued both advanced and us, and most liability went on advanced.
And, and not only would you have to get, hire a nurse, we'd have to hire a doctor. And for seven days a week coverage, you couldn't hire just one. So, you'd have to hire two doctors and two nurses.
And malpractice insurance. It would, it would, I'll guarantee it would be a much higher price than this, it's
So, do they have a doctor in our facility?
Uh, the doctor does come to our facility, doesn't come every day, he does come and then we're in constant contact with him, going with our medical protocol.
I mean, I realize that some of these services are services that we need and are required, but, I mean, we have to control those costs. I mean, we can't just, can't just keep paying whatever it is. I mean, that's just not realistic.
Well, we didn't pay whatever, as we opened up the bid, people bid on, on the different products, so I mean, we're
Right, but you got, you basically got one vendor and you got somebody that nobody knows anything about, so, I mean, you basically got one bid.
Right, but, I, I mean, we, I don't know if you can, I don't know if you can justify not wanting to pay the 193 because of the, of the liability coverage that they're giving us, taking us out of that, that motion as it is. I mean, it's, the, the amount of liability that this, that the sheriff's office, me and you three would carry because of this would be unbelievable.
Right. I mean, every, every jail in the state of Missouri has, I assume they probably have the same vendor?
No.
So, who are they using?
Well, there are some that hire their own nurses and doctors. They're pretty small. A, a facility of my size does not have that. Matter of fact, I think Boone County has a full-time, two full-time nurses and a full-time doctor.
Yeah, and I hate to see what they pay, but I, their doctor also moonlights over cap region and the ED, so.
And we could do that too, but it's gonna cost us $464,000 a year.
Yeah. And the liability insurance is just, it's, I
It's that bourbon.
It's a lot of money, without a doubt, but it's something, it's a necessary evil for, to ruin a jail.
Yeah, we have, we have to provide.
All right, I'm, I'm good.
I'm good.
So, I move that we award the medical services for the Cole County Jail to advanced correctional.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
We will put together the contract, we say we, and we'll get that to you. Do you need to, you need to get on the agenda and sign the contract?
We will, yeah.
Yeah.
And if we could have Kristen make the adjustments to the budget too.
Yeah, well, we're working with them, because we get to do our presentation with y'all and the report, this will all be, we'll have this all worked out for them. All right?
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Do we have any unfinished business? No, okay. New business, accounts payable review, but?
We have accounts payable.
Uh, she said, yeah, asking for approval for accounts payable, pending review.
I thought Chelsea was in charge.
Yeah. I mean, that we approve accounts payable.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, second final reading of budget adjustment number 19.
Um, this is for the traveler's check, I would just need to sign for the $5,200.
Is this a insurance check? I move that we sign court order number 19.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Chris asked us to discuss accounts payable reimbursement request. Well, I think Deb got the bill from the assessors conference that you're, were required to attend. The room rate was $119 a night and I don't know, anyway, I guess you missed the deadline. And then, I think you went in a day early and stayed a day after, so we were just trying to Your assess Uh-huh. Yeah, at Camden Lake.
Uh, that wasn't the assessors conference, that was a training class. That was required training. That was in September, uh, let's see, September 18th to 13th?
Yep.
And then, assessors conference was the first week of October. So, was it the training class?
It was a, it was a training class
Okay.
at Camden on the Lake.
Okay. So, what we had said we would authorize was a payment of $119 per day for the two nights or was it three nights of the conference?
Well, your last start is at 8:00 AM Monday morning, so we go in Sunday night, you've got Sunday night, Monday night, Tuesday night, Wednesday night, Thursday night, five days. And it's the same place that we've been going for years. So, what was the issue?
So, it was a required annual training for the assessors, correct?
It's not annual training, but it is required training, yes. I have to have so many hours within a certain period of time.
Okay. And so, did, did you get all your hours during that week?
Yes.
So, you got a certificate?
Yes, I have a certificate.
So, I heard that you weren't even at class on Monday.
No, I, I did not get in until later on Monday. I had a migraine that morning, so it was early afternoon, I got hit right at 11:00.
So, I have the sign-in sheets, Chris, and, from that training. And you didn't sign in on Monday. And I was told that you didn't show up Tuesday morning, but showed up Tuesday afternoon and signed in for Tuesday morning and Tuesday afternoon. And I also know that you did not get your certificate, unless you have it with you or you can produce it, but, so.
I'm sure I forget it. Where did you get this information from? I'm sure you just, I'll give the certificate for you.
I got it from the Assessors Association.
From the Assessors Association?
Yeah.
Who it was that you spoke to, so I didn't?
I'm, I'm not gonna reveal that, but I mean, I actually have the sign-in sheets, I got copies of them and, so, anyway, but That's fine, but I mean, obviously, you're asking for reimbursement for nights that you stayed and then classes that you supposedly didn't attend. And, I mean, if you got the certificate, that's one thing, and I'd be happy to reimburse you for required training, but you gotta go to the classes, I mean, you gotta complete the training. So, I guess where I'm at is if you completed the training and got the 32 hours during that time period, I'd be a whole lot more likely to reimburse you for the costs than if you're trying to get reimbursement for rooms and then you didn't go to the training. So, anyway, so if you can produce that certificate, I mean, I'd be, I don't like that, I don't like that you, you know, instead of a $119 rate that you used a, got a suite or whatever, I mean, and I realize that maybe they didn't have the rooms, but you could've stayed somewhere else.
I can, well, the classroom there at Camden on the Lake, and I'm not aware of any other hotels down at that far downriver lake, other than you come back towards the main highway and watch the 14 down there. Now, what, what happened with the rate was because of scheduling, in September, I wasn't sure I was gonna be able to go to the class until later on in the month. So, my reservation didn't get made till the 4th. The Assessors Association gets so many rooms that at a certain price, well, they're always willing to take more people into the classroom, they can always put up another table and add a few more chairs, but they have a set number of rooms that they're given. So, when those rooms run out, whoever comes in after that is stuck with what they got. And, and I asked if they had other rooms and they said, no.
But Chris, was this the mandatory training, you had to have the hours?
Yes.
Okay, so, I mean, when we get that, ours is in February, I give it to Debbie immediately. Now, we don't stay, but she gets this registered. You can always cancel or whatever, but if you know that's your mandatory training, that you have to go to, to, to receive, you know, and, and
I had the option of going in February, but then again, it's possible that something would come up and I wouldn't have been able to go in February also. And I was reaching the deadline for getting this rate down.
But, but what Sam's getting at is that, so, I can reserve all kinds of rooms, all kinds of times in the future, and usually, everybody has a 24-hour cancellation policy, similar to what I did at Tantera this past weekend. So, I, I didn't stay Monday, so I canceled on Sunday. And I said, look, I'm not staying Monday night, I'm leaving. And so, they reimburse the rate. So, you can go ahead and schedule it and then cancel if you can't make it, but
I was at the, I was at Camden on the Lake. I went in, I went in Sunday night, and that morning when I woke up, I had a migraine and had to take a pill, so I wasn't able to get in till later.
I mean, I just
As far as the rooms, if I could make you a way of explanation, they, the Camden on the Lake was built as vacation condos and most of the rooms are pretty nice. In fact, I'm not sure if they've got any different rooms, because I've never been in a room other than the type that I had this time. And I've got from my class back in, let's see, let's just do it this way. From 2018, they called it a double studio. And, and in Okay, then later on, the same, same estate, they called it a king's studio. Same price for the room, different name. And then, they also called it a king grand suite. So, I don't know that the name of what they called the room is any different. The only difference was that there were so many that were allotted for the Assessors Association, the need went beyond that. So, I had to take what they had. It was the same type of room, exactly the same as I had previously with these other classes, except that I didn't get the assessors rate, because they'd already used up their allotted number of rooms.
Well, I would, I would be okay with reimbursing you at $119 a night and
But it's, it's state mandated training that I have to go to.
But you ended up paying 200 and, how much was it a night?
Well, actually
It varied.
To get the bill, it went up based on
First night was 259, I think.
And I asked to get the assessor's rate and they said there were no more rooms at that rate.
I probably would've gone and found another hotel and just stayed there and driven down, but that's, and I'm not gonna get into a
Well, if, if I know that upfront, then I can do that. But if I didn't know that you weren't gonna reimburse for something that I'm required to do.
Had more than double the rate, though.
Well, I don't get your double the rate here.
$119 was the, was the rate and at 250, it's, you're, you're
Sunday night was 219, Monday night was 219, Tuesday night was 279, and Wednesday night was 279.
Yeah, and the assessors rates in 213, 217, and in 18, it was 119 plus a resort fee, which
And then Thursday night, Thursday night
I did not get the assessors
289.
So, you did use your things that you're, that you're outlawing and you knew about it ahead of time, I can do something about it, but to do it after the fact, I got no control of that.
Well, you said, and let's say, I didn't get signed up in time, it's gonna be more than double the amount, are y'all okay with it?
I didn't know
I probably would've still said, no, yours gonna have to drive back and forth.
So, you made reservations, you didn't?
I made reservations on the 4th of September. And then, I went down on whatever that Sunday was before the class started on Monday morning. And I went down on the 8th of September, but the class started at 8:00 on the 9th.
So, you made reservations four days before the conference?
Yes, it was only four days before, because I was not sure that I was gonna have the time for it yet. I understand that, that you all wanna have some control over the situation, you, you wanna make rules, but we can't make the rules as we go along. We have to know the rules ahead of time so that we can take steps to make sure that we're following the rules.
So, we can just let people go spend the money and then they come to us and say, well, you didn't have a rule, but I bought this Corvette anyway. So, well, okay, see, we didn't tell Sammy can buy a Corvette, but now he's gonna go buy the Corvette and say, it wasn't a rule, reimburse me now, I won't do it again.
Okay, but Corvette's a little ridiculous to prepare, it's a real
Again, $259 a night is ridiculous for a
I agree, I agree.
So, why didn't you get pre-signed up?
I would've done it.
You should've been pre-signed up. You pre-signed. When the sign up
I'm sorry, what, you didn't pre-sign?
When the, when the sign up situation happens, there's always your pre-sign. You sign up beforehand, you get them rates. So, you sign up at the So you sign up at the time of the sign up, not four days before.
I was not sure I was gonna be able to go to.
But we're not even sure. As soon as I get the thing from MAC, I give it to Debbie. And then Debbie will send out and say, you're going, we go ahead and we, we are probably one of the first counties that, that fills out our registration and sends it in. Then we get an email, are you gonna stay? And, you know, Jeff said, probably not. I said, yeah. But I mean, if, if, every, every time I make reservations, you know, you have that window to cancel. So if something comes up, you cancel it. I.
I, I didn't think to make reservations ahead of time.
Okay.
A very busy summer and fall. We were short staffed. We were getting new staff in and trying to get them to train. It just slipped my mind.
And just drive back and forth.
Well, with my medical condition, I can't do that. Jeff sitting in the chair for eight hours in the classroom and drive through hours a day.
Uber. Still has been cheaper than a two hundred and eighty-nine dollar room.
Taxi.
Taxi. So my candidacy to tax it is cheaper.
I mean, the thing of it is, Chris, is that, you know, whether it's a rule or whether we have a policy or whatever, we have to do up here what's in the best interest of the taxpayer. I mean, it's not our money. Not our money. It's the taxpayers' money. So, you know, if it's a hundred and nineteen dollars, that's what we need to do. If we need to drive back and forth, that's what we need to do. We need to do what's in the best interest of the taxpayer, not what's in the best interest of us. So anytime we can save dollars, we need to save dollars. And so, you know, and, and to say you're not sure that you're gonna have the time, well, I could say that about a lot of stuff. I don't have the time. Well, yeah, you make the time. This is mandatory training. You make the time. I have to go. We have MAC training. I have to go. I have to be there. So, I mean, yes, can you do it at other times? But when you do it at other times, don't you have to pay for that as well? Well, when you make up training, when you have to make up training, when they don't have that conference, you have to pay for makeup training? I'm pretty sure.
I think there's something you can do.
Kristen had to do that. Some others had to do that when they had to miss a day. Yeah.
But we go in February. We know we have to go in February. So we're gonna be, as soon as we get the registration, we're gonna register. Now, we drive back and forth, but say if I'm there and it, it's icy and snowy, then I'm probably not gonna stay there. I'll go stay at the Drury or I'll go stay at one of the other. I think there's a Hampton down there and just, you know, because I'm sure that the rate at, at the Holiday Inn Express is gonna be, I don't know. I'd, I'd check and see before I, I'd stay, but I'm just, and what was the Thursday night suite?
It was two eighty-nine.
Two eighty-nine. I.
The weekend, the rates go up.
I mean, your class was done on Thursday.
Why did you stay, why did you stay that night?
There's testing Friday morning. Tested as a minister. This is the venue that we go through, the, the class that we had. We go through everything in here. We have homework in the evenings to take care of. And then at the end of the week, we have a test on this. And all those classes are just like. It, it's, it's not like I'm trying to, you know, book the Taj Mahal or anything. I made a good faith effort to get a room at a reasonable rate and was unable to.
I don't think you did though, Chris. Not four days before. I'm sorry, but that's. I, I. I would, I would pay the hundred and nineteen dollars a night for, but that's, that's all I'm willing to pay.
I mean, I, I think there needs to be some more discussion. I mean, obviously, I think we need to have a, like, we need to have something in our policy handbook that specifies how much we're willing to reimburse. And, and I know I had some conversations with Kristen as well. And I think we need to look at what we reimburse for as far as meals go and stuff too, but anyway. I mean, for forty, fifty minutes away, I mean, I just, I think it's a exorbitant charge, but anyway.
I, I agree, it was a very high price. And I didn't wanna pay it, but I did have another option at that time. There was not a little hotel real close by me.
What do you guys wanna do?
I'm good with the one nineteen. Could've drove down, back and forth every day. Could've gotten a different hotel.
Yeah, I probably would've looked for a different hotel, but, you know, as I said, that's, if we're in February, if we're in St. Louis, in Kansas, in Columbia, and the, you know, the weather gets bad, then I'm gonna stay somewhere, but I probably won't stay at the Executive Center. I'll stay, you know, there's enough hotels there. But that would be, it'd have to be really bad.
So I think there, I mean, obviously, whether, whatever you wanna pay, you know, there's, there's other resort fees and other things on here too, so we'll just need to go over that and see what.
It is in the policy. It says overnight lodging when required. It's not required. You can drive back and forth. It's, it's forty miles.
Jeff, I told you, I can't sit eight hours in the classroom and then two hours driving out.
Go take a nap and then drive home. I mean, you know as well as we do that it's not a reasonable expense, Chris. And it should've been signed up beforehand, pre-signed, whatever. It's not a word. Maybe I'm making up a word. It's Websterized down. So pre-sign up, get signed up early enough. You have the rates. You can always go back and cancel. Chris did it this weekend for MAC train, or for the MAC conference. I was signed up for it. I had rooms. And then I decided I was gonna drive back and forth, so I canceled Thursday. So.
I understand. And then I, in the future, that's what I'll do. But it just didn't happen this time. I had so many things going on that I was not able to get that done.
I mean, that's okay if it's your own money, but this is taxpayers' money. And I don't know anybody in their right mind that would say, hey, yeah, that's fine. Go ahead. You know, you signed up late. Do whatever you wanna do. So I'm, I'm at the hundred and nineteen. I'd reimburse it that much.
Yeah, that's, I'm, that's what I'm, would recommend. But I still would like to see your certificate too.
That was your off-site to do.
That's where I'm at on it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, I think that's fair and reasonable and, but, I mean, I, I still wanna see the certificate before I reimburse for, for the training. I mean, you know, it's. So that's where I'm at. But I mean, if you guys are at the one nineteen, I mean, then we'd have to just look at the, you know, some of the other incidentals, resort fees and different things. Obviously, those are gonna get charged regardless of what the rate is, but anyway, so.
I think we could've got cheaper hotels, probably. In fact, you guys have them for about thirty-nine dollars a night. I mean, it wouldn't have been, it wouldn't have been.
Those are once per hour.
What are you talking about, Sam? Twenty-five dollars, Sage Beach, Camden Town. Hundred and nine dollars. There's a lot of cheaper ones. I mean, you're an elected official. You should be concerned about being fiscally responsible too.
I think that you will find that my office is more than fiscally responsible. Our expenditures throughout the year are very low and well within reason.
Talking about your office. I was talking about you.
You, you're talking about what the, how the assessor trial has been.
Talking about you.
Yeah.
You, not your office.
It all works together, you know.
They had nothing to do with the hotel. Your office had absolutely zero to do with that.
No, my employees did not, but the assessor's office did.
It was all about you, not your office. That's all I'm being clear about.
You can call whoever you want to.
You just said they had nothing to do with it, so you called it the same.
All right, well, I think we'll, we'll get with Debbie and we'll work out what we're gonna reimburse you on the room rate. But if you can, get us the, the certificate of completion for the, cause I know, I think Debbie sent you an email for, to everybody about getting the certificate turned in so you could get your two thousand dollar.
Yes, I got that. But once again, the resident of the association didn't sign it, so I had to send it back to them in their signature. I have the certificate, but I had to get a signature. That's not the one for the class. That's the one for the conference. That's the one Debbie's talking about.
Okay.
Okay.
Hopefully, I'll have that before the week's out.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Discussion regarding appointees to the nine-one-one Joint Communications Committee, Heartland Port Authority Board of Commissioners, Mid-Missouri Regional Planning Commission.
Okay, so I put this on here. I don't remember what I was seeing. I think I saw some emails about the nine-one-one Joint Communications Committee. I don't know.
Which is Gary Wilbur's, Peewee.
Yeah, and so I think, I think Peewee's term had been expired for quite a while or something.
Twenty-ten or.
Anybody haven't had a meeting in forever.
So, I mean, we don't have to decide anything today, but I just think that we need to, we need to make sure that we got good representation on those boards. I mean, obviously, I don't know if Peewee's still coming to those meetings or do we even have a representative? Does one of us serve on that or?
They don't have meetings. I don't think they've had a meeting since.
I'll check with Peewee and Gary Wilbur.
Well, I mean, they, they should be having regular meetings.
Yeah, I, I think so too.
Huh? No?
For what? I mean, there's, what's on their agenda?
They scheduled a meeting, yes.
Okay.
They're scheduled.
Okay. Can we get notification of those? I don't know that I've ever.
Yeah, I can.
Okay.
Usually not many people show up.
Right. So then, Heartland Port Authority, actually, Gary Wheeler has termed out and he does not wish to re-up. He's just too busy. His term expired October thirtieth. And so I've, I've reached out to Jeff Naught, and I think Jeff will, actually, I've reached out to several people and obviously just time commitment and different things. So I'll confirm that with Jeff, but I think he will, would be willing to serve.
Yeah, there's a lot going on with it right now, so it's important to have someone that's got the time to commit to it.
Right. And then, Mid-Missouri Regional Planning Commission, obviously, I'm the chairperson of that. But Virginia Bain was a representative from St. Martin's. I think Virginia is just, I don't know if she's retired yet, but she's not willing to re-serve. But I think, I haven't confirmed this, but I think Doug Reese would might, might serve on that board, so. And Doug's been pretty involved there as well, but anyway.
I'm a fan of Doug.
But anyway, I just, just wanted to make sure that our committees were up to date and. So unless, unless you guys got somebody else that you want me to, to look at, obviously, it's a, it's a commission decision on who we appoint, but I just wanna make sure that we got good representation on our boards.
Okay, yeah.
Any questions or concerns on any of that?
No, I've been kinda reaching out to some of the East Side business associations and stuff too to see if anybody's got any, any volunteers or any recommendations or, or anything as well, so.
So I will say that Roger Sworx, I was in here this morning. Roger serves as the city representative for the Heartland Port Authority. I don't know that they've reached out to anybody, but Roger's not gonna re-up either.
Oh?
Yeah, Roger's just got, he's busier in retirement than he was working, I think, so. Anyway, but, so the city will be looking for somebody to serve on the port authority as well. So if you have somebody that's maybe inside the city that I think might be a good, good person to serve on that, I could definitely bring it to, to the city and see if they be willing to put them on there, so.
Okay.
Not our decision, but obviously, sometimes it's hard to fill board seats.
Yeah, we've been really lucky on most of our commissions and boards that we, we've had people that wanna serve. So I, I commend all of these people, so, yeah. That's great.
Go ahead and take Kirk Christie's if you want.
Okay, Work Size Wellness Update.
So this is Jennifer Walker. She's our new Work Site Wellness Nurse. She's just been with us since September, but she's really hit the ground running.
What's our drill? Kick some zombie butt, man.
You got a T-shirt.
Yeah. It's the wrong T-shirt. It wasn't what we ordered, but that's okay. So anyway, she's just really hit the ground running. I thought you guys might like a little summary of what's gone on in two thousand and nineteen and then talk about what she has planned for two thousand and twenty.
Okay, so two thousand and nineteen, things that the Work Site Wellness has accomplished. They did the biometric screenings in January. We've provided the smoothie makers and the healthy snacks for each department every two weeks to give them a healthy option for eating. We've done some lunch and learns to educate on healthy topics. And then we've done the, the challenges. They had one in February and then the most recent zombie walking challenge, which we had a hundred and seventeen people participate in. Currently, I am working on doing ergonomic screenings in the offices for anyone who is interested. And then for the two thousand and twenty year, we're requesting a similar budget so that we can again provide the biometric screening so that people can have a comparison of their lab work from last year. Continue doing the healthy snacks. We've had a lot of good feedback on that. We'd like to continue doing the lunch and learns with healthy topics, not only for physical, nutritional, but also the mental wellness. And then we're hoping to have a few more challenges in two thousand and twenty with walking challenges and healthy eating challenge, provide healthy cooking classes there in the Cosmo Kitchen at the Health Department. And then a lot of corporations have a wellness incentive program where they have, they give money off of insurance. And I know that our insurance for employees are free. But the Wellness Committee had talked about possibly doing a similar incentive program to where each time that you participate in a wellness program, we could do like a, your name gets put into a drawing to win a prize that we could have a drawing twice a year to encourage people to do, participate.
You done? Are we gonna talk some more? Can you tell me a little bit about the ergonomic screenings? What, what's that entail?
So I've gone to, I've had one day of that and that's been here at the Annex. And basically, I just go look at your workstation to make sure that everything is ergonomically correct. And majority of the things are just like moving the screen up or increasing your chair, moving things closer to you, things like that.
Okay.
I can wish you told me to move my phone closer 'cause I have to reach for it and I moved my chair up 'cause I was like, you know, your neck.
What, do you wanna move it farther so you exercise more? I mean, like, you have your cooler or something, but you don't wanna just get it right. You gotta get up and go get it, or if you wanna get your ice cream sandwich, you gotta go.
Downstairs to the freezer, yeah.
Um, so you took a class on how to.
For the, I did a lot, I did a lot of research.
Ergonomic screening or something, yeah.
She did self, she did self, self-taught for that.
Right. So it's just proper posture, and seat height, and screen height, and just making sure that, uh, people aren't hurting themselves when they reach for the phone.
Yeah, can, can you do anything with Larry Vincent? I mean.
Hopefully, it'll prevent carpal tunnel, or those trips to the, you know, chiropractor for your neck, you know, adjustment, things like that.
So we're gonna do the biometric screenings again. Is this kinda your proposed budget here?
Correct.
So some incentives, so some prizes and whatever.
Like Instapots, or, um, you could even do like the little ninjas, or, you know, some prizes that we encourage.
For healthy habits.
Our next class at the health department's gonna be an Instapot. We're actually gonna do it at each, at five o'clock.
So, I think this program really gets the, gets the Health Department, and specifically you, in front of a lot of our employees, and so obviously, I, I think, since the Health Department has moved, uh, just the, the image of the kind of services that we provide is, is kinda changed, and so you're seeing more clientele, you're seeing some people really utilizing our services, uh, flu shots, different things, um. Obviously, you got an award for the, uh, from the Lions Club, or from MAC, actually, um, but, uh, for just all the other participation that we've done with the Lions Club and Cosmos, and, and other, Epsom Shriners, and other groups, and, uh, you know, and you got the, the Milk Depot going.
Yeah, that's.
And you got the diaper program going, and so, you know, you're, you're seeing a lot more people, and, but where I was going is, if we can get all our employees to start using the Health Department more, I think we can work towards having a, a nurse, or a, uh, can't think of the name.
Practitioner, nurse practitioner.
Nurse practitioner, yeah. There, where our employees can use that person as well, and I think that will even save us even more on our health insurance costs, um, you know, that, most people don't see the costs associated with that, but when you're on our PPO plan, you go to the doctor and you pay twenty-five bucks, or whatever. Well, you don't see the other two hundred that comes full circle, um, through our third-party administrator, right back to Debbie, and she pays out the two hundred, so, those are where our costs go, and so, anyway, if we could get our people to use those for small stuff, which is mostly what people are going to the doctor for, is strep throat, and different things.
And also, like, um, maybe to do some, for lack of a better word, like, health coaching or wellness coaching, so people did their biometrics this year, they might say, oh, you know, my cholesterol's really gone up in the last year. Jennifer, or whoever, you know, what recommendations can you make to me to help bring that down? Because if we pay through Capri region for that health coaching, it's very extensive, so if our staff could do that, and kinda help people, or even they say, oh, it looks like I'm pre-diabetic, what should I do to prevent this from becoming a chronic illness?
Right.
I think that, that could really help the employees, um, you know, with insurance costs, and also makes them happier, more productive. They show up to work, they don't have those sick days, because their blood sugar is out of whack, and they just don't feel good, or getting hydrated, so some wellness coaching for one-on-one with people, I think, you know?
I agree, anything that people can do to keep from taking medication,
Mm-hmm.
um, whether it be for high cholesterol, or stress, or diabetes, or whatever, I mean, those, a lot of those drugs aren't cheap, and so, anyway, where you stay off the medication, I think, the better you are.
But you are getting more well-known, too, when you have the governor and his wife come to you, and you have the lieutenant, oh, yeah, they, yeah, and you have the lieutenant governor, and, and the mayor come, so we're, we're, we're getting better known, so I, I think that's great.
We're also getting more businesses asking us to come and do little flu shot clinics at their businesses, too, 'cause they get more participation that way. Our nurses make it really easy, you know, we, we're in and out, and they really like it.
That's good.
Yeah.
And with being able to buy the vaccine, and, um, bill insurance, we're making more money on those, too.
Yep. You're doing well.
Going to a dental clinic, um, here in town, I think this week, to place TB skin tests on all their employees, because they all work the same shift, they can't come, so, um, we're charging them a fee to go place all of them, plus the, the feet, and then we'll go back and greet them all. Just trying to make, um, make it easier for them.
That's good. Appreciate all your work.
Any more questions?
Yep.
I don't think so, it's been a good program, and I think it's really helped our, our insurance costs, and obviously, those continue to save us money, and we got, I think we saved a couple million dollars over the past several years, so.
Well, and if you get other people making comments, yeah, that's how we learned about the ergonomic assessments, I think someone sent something to Kristen or Jennifer, and, um, and then I asked Jen, yeah, Jen, this is Jennifer, if she would be interested in, or knew anything about, she was like, I'll get on, and she did, so.
Great.
If we have other suggestions, let us know.
Okay.
So how much participation? I mean, we had hundreds, I'm in on the zombie challenge, which, that was.
That's a third.
Peer pressure that we got put on, but, and my competitive nature really had me going on it.
Right.
So what do we need to do to get more participation? I mean, there are things here that are, that are actually good for you, which I dislike, because I like things that are good for me, like exercise. But I will walk to my deer stand at five o'clock in the morning. Makes no sense whatsoever. How do you get your posters out here more larger?
The right motivation, huh?
That's what I said, the right motivation, you can find somebody like, you know?
That's where that incentive program kind of
Good.
concept comes in play, 'cause you're gonna be more likely to go do these things if you get a prize for going, or get something for going.
So with the Instapot class, we're gonna, our goal is to have, one, that we show, we have everything cooked, and we show them, you know, they get to eat the lunch, but then we'll show them how to do it, and then also have one to give away, so if you come to the class, and you learn how to use it, you get to eat, and then you get a chance at a free one, so. I think knowing what would motivate someone like Jeff, you know, that's what we, we need to.
There's your challenge. That's Jennifer's next job.
He also, you know, he's a sheriff, he's got his guys that are
Right.
maybe in, uh, in the jail, and they can't just get away from this stuff that's maybe as easy, and, uh, Public Works and stuff, so.
That's why we got.
They have to take individual departments and work things.
Right, we're gonna have one at each department, but that's why it's so critical that those department heads and elected officials let those staff members be on the committee. 'Cause at the committee, we talked the other day, I was like, well, Betsy, what will work at the chairs? You know, Teresa wasn't there, but usually, we'll ask her, okay, what will work for Public Works, when can we come to you? Is it breakfast? Because that's when they're there, 'cause, you know, they're out there at lunchtime, so it's, it's really great that we have representatives from both departments or buildings on the committee, and they say, well, this, this is what my guys like, or this is what our staff wants to do.
Probably if you brought donuts out to Public Works, they would probably.
They would have to eat oatmeal donuts or something.
I have saying donuts.
No, I know, but I think that's how you'd get it, that's how you'd get it, find, find some gluten-free, sugar-free, uh.
That's how you get them to run, you put a donut or a cheeseburger at the finish line.
Tie it on a fishing pole and.
How about go fishing, right?
It's not funny, I've fallen for that before. So, I mean, one of the things that you said was, you get suggestions, help come up with the ideas, well, if you have a, you know, if they do bring a suggestion to you and you use it, that you give them a prize, or you give them some kind of a, a gift for bringing the idea to you, too.
That's great, yeah.
Get more, more heads together thinking about this stuff.
We did that survey before, um, you guys remember that? I think the, the biggest thing people did ask for was like reimbursement of gym memberships, which would be a logistical nightmare. You know, we did call around and get reduced rates at some of the gyms, like, um, Capri Gym Health Club, um, and Anytime Fitness, and then at this, fitness is already ten bucks, Jennifer bubbling the other day, and they didn't call her back. So, we were trying to get reduced rates for county employees, but having the county reimburse would be.
See, Cape Girardeau County has something like that, where the more you use a, that's, and I think it's just one gym, it's actually part of the hospital, but the more you use it, the less your, your, your monthly fee is, and then if you use enough, it's free. Now, I, I don't, I don't think we'd get anybody that would do that, but if, if, they, they actually have a lot of their employees who go, you know, to the gym before they come to work, and, uh, that they get into it, so I, I don't know, but. We also have our bicentennial next year, can we do a bicentennial run again, or? You did the run, so I.
Still doing a five K for the bicentennial.
Yeah, I think.
Two hundred K, it's two hundred.
Two hundred.
Well, it's two hundred part dates, so.
Oh, okay.
I can get a two, how about a two K?
There you go.
But I mean, you know, that would, that would be kinda fun, and, you know, again, if we do a T-shirt or something like that with, uh, we might look at that. Or we could have races with those scooters, I'll have the scooters back out. You could do all kinds of stuff, I mean, besides a run, you could, you could have different competitions.
Let's stay away from the ones that have workers' comp claims in them, though, so stay away from the scooters.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, okay.
I think I love five K.
Yeah, yeah.
Cool, thank you.
Okay.
Who was that, Jeff? Did you go to the hospital, the one you were visiting?
Oh, not. Jeff Naught, N-A-U-G-H-T.
Okay.
Other issues?
Any other issues?
Um, so I had a couple other things that I just needed to mention, they're not on the agenda, but anyway, so site improvements project out here, I think I talked to you about it a little bit. Um, so they dug around the foundation, and found some different stone than what we were anticipating, um, and so there was some, um, oh, there's some voids in the stone, and different things, and so, uh, they recommended putting a parch coat, um, over the stone before they put, um, the sealer on there, and so, um, and then Greg, Greg wanted them to add this, uh, milled drain material, um, which is kind of a dimple board type thing, over the, um, over the sealer, and, um, so, anyway, that's around, trying to do some quick math, it was around the, probably thirteen thousand dollars, um, roughly, for the parch coat and to add the milled drain.
Yeah, I was out there yesterday afternoon with Greg, looking at the foundation, I mean, that's eighteen eighties.
Right.
Uh, it's, yeah, we have.
Anyway, I think there was, they had a, kind of a contingency bill ten of, of ten thousand dollars, um. But then, uh, one of the other, one of the other things that was bid in that, um, was, uh, some electrical, um, and so it was a, they had spec'd a direct berry electrical line, and Greg wanted them to put it in conduit, so if we ever needed to pull a new line or something, that we could do that, and so that change was like two thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars, um, and I think there's, there's another change on some of the pipe, but we did encounter less rock than, than what was, um, than what was anticipated, so there may be some savings there, too, but anyway, just kinda wanted to keep you guys up to speed.
Considering nothing's been done for over a hundred years, I think this is, I'm fine with it. A hundred years from now, commissioners can
Right.
do something again.
What do we have in contingency, though? I don't, I don't wanna go in over budget.
Well, so like I said, we had, I know they put the, um, ten thousand in there, um, for kind of a contingency.
But you had thirteen thousand for the coating and the dimple board.
Right.
And if that wasn't on the original bid, I mean, why wasn't it on the original bid, if it's not necessarily
Well, so they.
required. All the stuff they're doing, it should be, and I say should, using that term loosely.
So the, so, so the rock is kinda all over the place, and there's, it's missing some, some head joints, and some masonry in it, I mean, obviously, it's, you know, almost, almost a hundred, two hundred years old, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, anyway, but anyway, so it's just, that's what the engineer, and that's what everybody's recommending, is that they put a parch coat on it, and, uh, and move forward with that, so, like I said, I think we're close, I mean, obviously, there was, uh, there was, remember, there was twenty-five thousand dollars in there for the monument, um, you know, obviously, that could come out, and so that cost would go down, there was also some rock excavation in there, which that's gonna come in under, so I'd say we're pretty close to, I hate to say even, but we're close, I don't, I think at this point, I don't think we're gonna see any a whole lot more that's gonna be unforeseeable.
We didn't have to dig as deep, if we're gonna do some certain stuff, so we would save.
Right.
And so it should about be a wash. But, we gotta still keep it within the budget on it. Because that was a, that had a big price tag on it, and I don't wanna go on it anymore, so if we have to cut back somewhere to, if he wants a dimple board, okay, where are we gonna cut back at? If we have to cut back two thousand on the monument, then we cut back there. So, that's just where I'm at with that, I know, I briefly spoke with Greg about it this morning, it all makes sense, he's trying to take care of the building and take care of us, so they don't have to worry about it even when we're gone.
Right.
I mean, dead.
You say the courthouse is older than the captain.
Right.
So, you know, we haven't done anything to the founder, I mean, it's, it's, we're still so much.
But it's been leaking?
We're gonna keep it from leaking, and it's, it's.
You open it up, now you make all those problems.
No, it's, uh, no, I think we need to do it right. Yeah, so that, a hundred years from now, the next commissioners can reason.
So. Uh, keep us informed on it.
Yeah.
I'll have those change orders for us, uh, next week, to probably sign off on the change, so, I can get you more details on, uh, on kinda where we're at, but.
See where we're at with the monument, too. What exactly we're gonna do with that.
Yeah, we had a meeting at, uh, MAC, I met with, with, uh, Callaway and Boone, so I'll show you that stuff, too.
But that monument's not this monument, that's totally different monument.
Oh, the, the nineteen twenty-one World War.
Right.
Yeah.
So we have other monies for the, the joint monument.
Yeah.
But the monument out here, there was money in this project for.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, you're right, we could cut back on that monument out in front, so. That's all I had.
Okay, I just, that's just my big thing, is keeping it within that budget.
I was gonna, I was looking at my December calendar, and Christmas Eve is on Tuesday, and New Year's Eve is on Tuesday, so, I mean, they are workdays, but, um, I don't know, I didn't know if maybe that, uh, instead of meeting on December twenty-fourth, if we'd wanna move our meeting to Monday, the twenty-third, and then move our meeting on the New Year's Eve to Monday, December thirtieth.
I'm good with it.
So what are we talking about?
Christmas Eve and New Year's.
Twenty-third and the thirtieth.
And the thirtieth, yeah, instead of, uh, twenty-fourth and the thirty-first.
I mean, the twenty-third is good, and thirtieth is good, so.
Okay.
So you'll take care of getting those moved?
I will do that.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, anything else?
All right, I know we stand at recess till four-thirty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.